Thank you very much President McLean. I want to thank the residents of this very historic county. What is about to take place today is more important than anything else we could be doing in this moment right now. I know there is an impending weather, but the forecast is going to be that much more worse if we don't get out and vote. I am excited for several different reasons. Number one, even though I think Jackie read my title as Executive Director of Vance Carolina and all of that, that's great. I'm from Sampson County. We have about two fewer stoplights than Hope County. And so I was excited to be in a place that had a bigger Walmart. I'm excited to be in an area that is such a historic significance to education in North Carolina. We don't have to get into it now because we'll get into it during the conversation. And I want us all to just really make sure that we are doing two things. I want us to make sure that we are listening to the candidates to hear specifically what they're going to do. I also want us to make sure that after we vote, we're going to hold them what?
Accountable.
Accountable. Because power is not in the vote alone, but power is in making sure that we're watching the whole entire process. How many folks have tried to register the vote to talk to somebody about voting and they said, "It's not important and my vote doesn't count"? Don't you know that those individuals didn't live the life of half of us in here that have experienced some of the trials and triumphs and tribulations that have come through the engagement of voting? And one thing that we can do in this process right now is make sure that in this year, it's not about the president. So folks that are demystified or talking about my vote doesn't count, in these races that you're going to hear from today, less than two to three votes per precinct can determine the outcome of this election. So I want us to make sure that we're really realizing the power that we have. And before we get started, I want us to do one thing in particular. Let's give a round of applause to the candidates. It's not an easy task. Representative Reverend Pastor Pierce can let you know it's not easy. And so we thank you all for your time. And if we're going to jump right into it, we want to start off with some introductions. I'm not going to ask in any particular order, even though I know in Hope County they like for the ladies to go first as we do in Sampson County. And if you would please, you have two minutes to give us your name, the office that you're running for, and any remarks that you so desire. Now, I've been asked by Ms. Jackie and Ms. Barbara McCoy. She said, "We are polite here. We don't pull, uh, Ms. Barbara McCoy, we don't pull coattails, but we will pause you whenever the time is ready." So please make sure I'll do a kind of simple gesture. I won't, you know, make it a big thing, but you'll know when you're getting close to time. So we'll start here. And I'm going to back out so you can make sure that you see the individuals that you're going to hear.
Hello, everyone. My name is Della Maynor. I am one of your awesome Hope County Board of Education members now. We have a great school team, the Board of Education. I was elected on the board in 2006. I've been on that for sixteen years. And I would want you to know I am the only candidate, the only candidate that has experience. And Albert Einstein said, "The only source of knowledge is experience," and I have that. So if you don't know who to vote for, vote for the woman experienced, and you have got the best vote, giving you a vote to the best candidate. Sorry, you guys up here tonight. So I appreciate y'all to vote. I was your Register of Deeds from 1976 to 2002. So I've been elected official. I have been a public servant all my life, and I love it. I love serving the citizens of Hope County. I love your kids or my kids, they're my babies. I claim them. When someone asks me how many children do I have, I say I have one daughter, four grandkids, two great-grandkids, and about eighty-five hundred other adopted children, which are my babies. And so I look at ten seconds. I look at them just like I look at my own family. I love them, and I will do the best I can do to make sure that they graduate from Hope County High School. Good evening. Let's give Ms. Della Maynor her hand. Experience does count, so you don't have to apologize for your experience. So good evening. I am Angela Sutherland, an Army National Guard veteran in the name of Hope County, as well as a product of the Hope County School System. Nineteen eighty-three graduate. I am a proud mother of three who matriculated in the Hope County School System as well. One of my sons been deceased, Maurice Latour Winston II, the founder and CEO of the Hope County Peacekeepers, who formed the successful and historical No Justice No Peace March in 2020. Hope County, I am your candidate for Hope County School Board. And I serve, I have been a minister of the gospel for over eighteen years. I have served as a minister and worship leader at the Inspiration Temple, the Central Church of God, on Hopeville Road in Fayetteville, North Carolina. And I also hold several positions and roles throughout the community. And I am an ordained chaplain of the Warrior Family Ministries. I serve in Hope County as a, uh, I serve in the county as a major and co-commander of chaplain of Rayford Unit. I participated in many and various extrantique activities as chaplain and women veteran and active of Fayetteville Chapter, uh, Fayetteville Chapter. I am the Hope County Democratic Party treasurer. I am a part of the Democratic Women of Hope County. And also I am the COO of the Hope County Peacekeepers. I have over twenty-three years' experience of education. I also have fifteen years in mental health and healthcare field. And there are three seats on the board that's available, and I would like your vote. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Catherine Blue, and I am a, I have actually been in the Hope County School System for over twenty-one years of experience. I started as a volunteer in my kids' school. And volunteering is so important. It helps kids to excel. From that, I went to being a substitute teacher and then a teacher assistant. Graduated from Ashford University and became a classroom teacher. I have worked with students of all races. I was a facilitator of the migrant program in Hope County. Listen, I'm running on passion, purpose, and experience. Purpose to help everyone be rewarded for their hard work and dedication. Teachers work hard. I was a teacher, so I was able to see on both sides of the standards what they need, the resources the kids need, and how we work hard with the resources that we have. I have passion. Kids are my passion. And then I have experience. I'm asking you to vote for Catherine Blue on November eighth. Or if you do early voting, October twentieth through November fifth. Come through for Catherine Blue. Catherine Blue is for the village.
Good afternoon, everyone. And I am speaking to seat of one of the three seats that's available here. I am a mother. I have three awesome sons. My oldest son is Dr. Allen Chandler. He just graduated from Hampton University. He's currently serving in the United States Army at the Second Ten. And I also have with me Jaden and Justice. Can you wave your hands so everybody can see who you are? So I am a widow as well. My husband's, um, he did twenty-one years in the United States Army as well. And I too graduated from Hope County High School in class of nineteen ninety-eight. And guess what? I still believe and I trust that anything is impossible for Hope County. Um, I'm so excited. I'm running for Hope County Board of Education because I still believe, I believe in this county because we have to have the necessary change to be on leech as we become the front, the upfront for all of our students. I feel that respect and honor will help us in our true to see better education and better experience and equality. I believe in relationships as we allow us to focus on our children, current, long, short terms, and long terms. As we all agree to keep the main thing that we have, and that's our children, focus on our main chief. I'm sorry, on our main, on our main thing. I'm here to bring hope, to keep our students at the forefront to accomplish what others have thought that do not have believed that was impossible. So my goal is to encourage our children to dream, train big. And also, Hope County, I'm ready to gear it up. I'm ready to pump it up and bring new ideas and new resources to Hope County High School.
Good evening. My name is Christopher Lees. I'm standing today also as a representative, a candidate for the Hope County School Board. I was a product of this community, born and raised. I've seen it. I've also, I've spent ten years in the U.S. Air Force as a veteran. So I've stood on the outside and looked at, looked back at the hometown, and now I'm at the hometown mound. So as we stand today, I'm all about accountability, as was first stated. By the accountability, also ownership. I think most times we always say that, um, you know, when we look at politics, we say the county itself. But I like to look at it as a community because when we involve our children, we talk about the community itself and not so much as in the politics of it. So in that ownership, I take Hope County just like home. And as we treat it like home, we move forward. And we have that ownership to say, "This is my, my county. This is my schools. These are our children." And we represent that in that same right as every child is our own. So as I stand here, I'm on October the twentieth, when the vote starts, I'm asking for one of your votes as your new Hope County School Board representative. Thank you.
It's actually, it's an evening. Is it dark out there yet? How dare political educators overseen by the elected Board of Education remove God from the classroom? But then it's still, in North Carolina, where a third grader elementary school can be obstructed in from the scene of this level? What is, what is self-sexual gratification this is North Carolina today? I'm John Harry. I'm your next Board Member who's going to sit on the Hope County Board of Elections. For I believe that the vast experience that I have, I can work for two unities. One, the state legislature, monetary. Second, the county commissioners, that's monetary. Because of their charters and states how to support public education in North Carolina, it's monetary. Monetary. Two separate, three separate unities. I've been at the state level. I spent six years on the North Carolina Board of Elections where, for six years, with other people in that field, we provided you with one of the closest elections they've had in North Carolina in probably maybe twenty years, these last two elections. What I would like to stress is this, and my wife said I better read it because I'll forget it. Please visit my website. And make sure when you visit my website, go W, W, John F. Harry dot com. If you don't put the W, W in there, you're going to get every Tom Dick and Harry in the world.
Thank you, John.
I tried, I didn't know how many John Harrys were out there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Did you kiss me?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Tony Cunningham Senior, and I am a candidate for the position of School Board for Hope County Schools. I'm a product of the Hope County Schools. I graduated from Hope County High School in nineteen eighty-two, whereas I joined the United States Army shortly thereafter, where I served twenty-one and a half years, retired as Sergeant First Class. I came back to Hope County, and I raised my children here in the Hope County School System because I believe that this was the place to raise a family. And also, um, I, my experience is that Hope County is one of the fastest-growing counties in the state right now. I think it's in the top five growing counties in the state. And we're experiencing a lot of growth here. And I believe wholeheartedly that my platform. I'm here to inspire community, invest in employees, and to impact children. That's what I want to do as a member of the Hope County School Board. So that, excuse me, you know, so that one day we can prepare these young people with a good basic education and prepare them to face the world, whether it be going to college or whatever kind of career that they decide to endeavor. Thank you for your time. Early voting opens, and I appreciate your vote. You know, but most of all, let's continue to pray for Hope County. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Ruben Castleman. I am a current instructor in the local community college. I have a master's in business administration and criminal justice administration, also a master's of science in criminal justice. I'm running for Board of Education is because our students academically are failing. Our parents have been silent. Transparency is very important. To improve our schools, we have to engage our parents. As a new School Board Member, I will establish a parents committee. This parent committee will be able to provide critical information to the School Board Members to make sure that the School Board Members make the right decisions for all of our students, keeping the parents in mind. According to Title Twenty, United States, Section Thirty-four, Zero-One, state and localities are responsible to provide support to all the parents. The parents are the primary educators. The schools are simply a tool to help us educate our children. Right now, we have an issue, issues retaining educators. We can't recruit bus drivers. I have the experience through the Army, through the Sheriff's Office, my current employer. I know how to recruit people. I am against adding to the current high school. I'm for building a new high school in the eastern side of Hope County. The pathway can be one school can have the CTE, the other school can have the STEM. A sound basic education deals with recruiting the proper educated teachers, proper infrastructure. I ask for your vote starting on October the twentieth. As I stand for students first, parents always.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It is not easy, two minutes, but we are going to stick to it because we know how much and how important it is for folks to get out in the storm. And we want to get time for question and answer. And at this time, we're going to start our first question. And so each candidate will have sixty seconds to answer the question. Again, want to make sure that we try to get straight into your point. I know we like to kind of do a little lead-in, but for these questions, and they are very dense, want to make sure we have a chance to hear from everyone. Also, too, the NAACP wanted me to let everyone know that this is a nonpartisan activity. These candidates have not been endorsed or are they supported by this branch? And also, all candidates were asked to participate. All candidates were asked to participate. And in this case, the candidates that you see before you today are the ones that have answered the call. First question, why are you running for this office? And you've already answered part of that in your opening statement. What makes you feel you are more uniquely equipped to hold it than your opponents? And give any examples of the kinds of civic participation or human service that has prepared or equipped you to run for School Board? Again, why are you running for office? What makes you feel you are uniquely equipped to hold this position more so than your opponents? And give us examples of the kinds of civic participation or human service that has prepared slash equipped you for this office? And we can start on this end and work our way down.
Thank you for the question. Awesome question. So again, I'm Ruben Castleman, okay? So I continue running now since November of last year. I've been involved in the Board of Education to know what's going on, what's failing in our system. I have partnered with other School Board Members to find out what they're doing right that we're not doing. Okay, all you got to do is look at Moore County. They get paid less per pupil, but yet their grades are better. So that is, that is one of the things I've been doing. I'm retired U.S. Army as a First Sergeant. Also, I'm also an instructor in the community college. I can see the failure firsthand in our, in our college. I can see the failure. I can tell you right now, based on COVID, we have actually held our students, all of our students, at least two years behind in time. And specifically, and I hate to even say this by race, specifically the Black and Hispanic community. We have failed our students, our children, but we have allowed this to happen. And I say this to the, to the parents. Parents, we need to get involved.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. For those of you that can't see in the audience, we do have a timekeeper here that is showing fifteen, ten, five-second countdowns. So just one more time, and then my voice will be the, you know, final countdown.
All right. Uh, first I'd like to say is that my working experience, first, as a soldier in the United States Army for twenty-one and a half years, leading, guiding, mentoring people, also working as a Department of Defense contractor, and also as a fleet supervisor for the town of Rayford has given me experience. Uh, also, most of my experience comes from the time, the twenty-plus years that I've spent working with youth in scouting programs, also in working with youth in ministry. You know, I get a chance to see firsthand, you know, what they're not getting at home. You know, so, uh, and that's the reason why I'm a firm believer that a parent is the first teacher in a child's life, you know, and that the school is just a tool that's used to help them to reach their goal. Thank you.
I just had my hip replaced. This is roasting my PT. I go to twice a week and nod the hospital. Um, let me say this. Each one of us up here, we're all qualified to be on the School Board. It's based upon how we're going to add them around the School Board. I said, "Visit my website." I can't say you and tell you that. I spent two years in a suicide ward in the state prison trying to figure out what caused suicides. And that was back in nineteen seventy-four to seventy-six. And today, we still don't know what causes suicide. I volunteered in the suicide system. Education. I never wanted to go to college when I went to high school back in nineteen sixty-four. I joined the Navy. I met somebody who says, "Son, there's something after for you." And I've been in education since then. I retired at Farbreg. I was from a GS five all the way up to GS twelve and back down to eleven retired in the education field. It's how I believe that I can serve the people in Hope County. We have our issues in Hope County, just like the United States today. We have this education thing going on in this country. We need to resolve it, and this is one place to resolve it. And I will be here. Thank you.
So there is a sixty-second timer here, and there are three different pages, as you'll see. One says fifteen. Can you hold that up so they can see? Can you see the one that says ten seconds? And then can you show the one that says five seconds? At five seconds, at five seconds, then I'll come out and you'll have your final time. That'll be the time. Thank you very much.
Okay, the question was, what makes you feel more than legally equipped to hold, to hold the title? But I want to move towards the facts. I believe that I'm a more favorable candidate because I don't want anything from students or the family of Hope County. I want to give them a feeling. I want to give them a voice, a hope, and I want to give them opportunity to be seen and not heard. I want to give them a chance to be seen and not heard, not for the sake of the numbers of popular popularity, but the sake of change and compassion. As far as being equipped, I have served children in schools. I have served schools in coming counties, and I love to support children in all schools. I love students at these schools. And one thing that makes me different is trusting myself and also because I don't have to, I'm sorry. I don't have to go into, I don't have to go into the room and talk, and I listen first.
Question started is, why are you running? Well, I want to understand as part of tomorrow. I think as we're preparing now, we're looking at, not today, but we're looking at tomorrow, what that looks like and what that entails. So as you stand, you start as a student. I walk the same halls these students walk now, the same schools. I've graduated from the same ones that exist to this day. I've stood as a student. I stood as a parent, also having a child in the school system, knowing exactly what a parent's outlook is, what the needs are, and the things that affect us most. So I also stand with the staff. Um, I've been part of the Department of Defense Department for the last sixty years. So that hands-on experience gives me that, that actual look of putting all three together and getting a clear view of exactly what's going on and how we can progress further as a whole, involving parents, students, and as well as the staff.
The first question was, why are you running? I'm running because I have the passion and I have the experience. I have passion for students. I have actually had the opportunity to have a rapport with the families. Um, actually being a facilitator of Hope County migrant program, Hope County Saturday Academy, has given me a great sense of the kids need us. They need my voice. They can't wait. Hope County can't wait. I feel like I'm unique because of the experience that I have and the parents that I know, the community. Being involved is so important, and that care and peace. I think that the parents being involved in the child's learning is so important. And starting with making sure that the kids, I think a foundation, giving them a strong foundation would build them up to become what we at Hope County want our kids to be.
Why am I running? I'm running because of the needs of the children, parents, and staff in our community. What makes me be equipped is my experience. My experience over twenty-three years as a substitute teacher and a bus driver. And also my certification as a Pierce Support Specialist, a community health worker. But most of all, because I am a past student, and I have seen as a student and as a teacher and as a leader in this community, the first needs of the children and the staff and this family. So that's my reasons, and this is my concern. My concern is for the children and the staff of the special needs and especially this program. And we're, I'm asking that, you know, as a community, that we come together and fight for our children and our teachers, especially in our special needs program. Thank you. I'm running again because I love teaching and wanting to learn. I want to make sure they graduate in the twenty-first century. They can go anywhere in the world and get a job. And we have a lot of things to be proud of here in the county. We are a purpose-starred district. We have a national baby council extension. We have industrial-recognized credentials. We have a STEM grant funding. We have needs-based public school capital fund grants, scholarships earned at the saves, uh, exceeds that workers and scores. We have really, uh, seven, seven, seven of our schools met growth, and that is wonderful. One hundred percent of those schools increased GLPs. That's why I'm running, because we're on the right road. We're not where we want to be. We would love to have one hundred percent of graduation rates, and we're working on that. And that's why I'm running again for the Senate.
I really truly appreciate all the candidates sticking to the time and trying their best. Um, how many people have actually had to speak in front of the School Board meeting? Those conversations are timed, too. So now the tables are turned a little bit, and at least we have multiple chances. If you didn't get a chance to get everything out in your comment during your time, save that last little piece for the ramp up in the next conversation. And at the end of the day, you want to give the individual voters enough information for them to want to seek you out and hear what else you had to say. Finish your sentence. So don't try to rush yourself at the end. Come to a close, and then hopefully our voters will have heard something that will pique their interest to, number one, want to hear more. Second question, this office is designed to serve a constituency of diverse people. What experiences do you have with diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts? And if you could, offer concrete examples. Diversity, equity, inclusion. Um, diversity, equity, inclusion, diversity is a main, uh, part of this position. What experience do you have in DDI, and can you offer concrete examples? We're gonna start with, uh, this half of the room. We're gonna start right here, and then we're gonna, after we go through, we'll go on the opposite end.
So, um, that's a good question. I had the opportunity to work with a diverse, uh, group of kids. As being a migrant tutor, it gave me the opportunity to build a relationship, not only with the migrant students, the Hispanics, but also being a classroom teacher, I had students coming from every race. And my thing about it is, all the kids, no matter what diversity they come from, no matter what their background is, they all want the opportunity to learn. So I'm thankful that I did have that opportunity to grow students of different diversities. And not only that, but I learned from them as being a teacher. And building that rapport with their families, uh, in the community was awesome. We will have, um, actually family days where the families will come, and we'll learn about each other culturally. So I had that experience and, um, willing to actually keep on.
I had the opportunity to, um, work at a program that had a diversity of students. And, um, I found that it was very, um, amazing because you had children teaching their parents. And that just absolutely blew my mind, and it made me want to even learn the language, language as well. And so I think, um, being, um, just seeing people as people, seeing people as they whole, not seeing the color, not seeing the, um, the language barriers, just seeing people as one and seeing people as family. So my experience is that, you know, I enjoy working with diverse people, no matter who they are, what they look like, what they sound like. And so down through the years, that's what I've done, especially in the school system. Thank you. I have lived in Hope County all my life. I'm out in the canyon, there is a scary light burning right now. And the diversity of Hope County is one of the most beautiful, neat places to live. Because you have the Hispanic race, you have the American race, you have the Black race, you have the White race, you have East race. You've got all kinds of different people that God created, and we should love each and every one of them. And the ultimate reason, we all have a different culture, different backgrounds. And see, that's what I know about Hope County. That's what I want to learn because I love being a part of Hope County. I graduated from Hope County High School in nineteen seventy-three, y'all, no bugs. So I have been here all of my life to make sure that our kids get the best education they can get, and I thank y'all for that.
When it comes, um, to the, uh, diversity and equity here in Hope County, I think, uh, anyone that spent time in the, uh, school system itself, interacting with students, you learn a lot from them, and they actually teach you just as much as you teach them. I think once you learn the students, you actually find out things that you might didn't know about yourself or the people around you that go on, um, as a role, even in that classroom, as you move on. I work every day in the department, uh, uh, actually dropout prevention. So in that aspect, uh, when you get a student's name, of course, you don't know what color they are, who they are, or anything about it most times. What happens is, um, you get that name, and you interact with that student and that parent, and you're able to go out there and go to the home and talk to them, see what that problem is. Uh, they'll discuss with you. You sit there and listen. They'll actually tell you what that problem is. And you actually get to see and interact exactly where the problem is and maybe how you can fix that. So it gives you that opportunity. I think being in that school system, being directly there with their hands on, it gives you that, that actual, I, I would say, it gives you a, another viewpoint that you wouldn't normally have. And I think that is something that is definitely needed.
So my entire life, I have been working in human service. Um, my first job that I had when I graduated from college, I was a juvenile court counselor in Robles County. And Robles County was very different. It was very diverse than Hope County. The last job that I had, I was working, um, at the Ford Bragg Army Education Center. When that population is a lot of diversity. Um, one of my main goals is that for students, in order to reach a child, you have a teacher child, or even in order to teach a child, you have to reach a child. So you have to know their foundation. You have to know their language. You have to know what type of, what type of lifestyle that they came from to build up the different, um, the different barriers that they have as far as diversity. So with that being said, I am very well diverse in diversity because of my, my background that I have and my, um, experience that I have with, um, the human service relationship.
We're all people, people. Up here, classroom is totally different than when you venture down the outside of the classroom. And it's, I can be part of, I was part of a group of people that got socked in Hope County. At the park rates and at the high school. But that's never came to mind to me. And I ask myself all these years, why do you, I see this little kid start naked. Three, four little kids back on the, going like this, like a mine or two and a half in the Arizona. But two years later, I'm in Iraq, and a six-year, a six-year-old came out to me and asked for her comput, my computer. Her mother was my interpreter. And she'll be twenty-six this year. And I ended up myself in front of mine getting that old girl school, every computer we got our hands on. We established a computer program for this all-girl school in the Kurdish mountain. So when you listen to us up here, we're all people, people. Take that in consideration. We're bending backwards to help people. That's what we got to do on that school board.
John, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Diversity, equity, inclusion. First words that came to mind for me is content of character. You know? I think about the level of people, and the first thing I think about is treat others the way that you would want to be treated. And that's the way I run my life. When I see people, that's what I see a person. It doesn't matter what they look like. It doesn't matter where they came from. They're still a person. And I treat them the way that I would want them to treat me. But as far as my experience with diversity, I was in the military for twenty-one and a half years. One of the most diverse environments that you'd ever want to be in on earth. And also, the twenty-plus years that I participated in scouting, another diverse environment, dealing with people from all walks of life. So that experience can be transferred over to the education system. Thank you very much.
I am a first-generation American of Mexican descent. I've been around the whole world, twenty-one years in the army. So I'm gonna change this a little bit. Diversity means making sure that we have a diverse members in the school board, so we don't have group thinking. Inclusion means to include our parents in the decision process of our students. Equity means being able to have qualified teachers to teach our students. Infrastructure, like a new high school, not adding to the current high school. A new elementary school. A new middle school. Bus drivers. That's what diversity, inclusion, and equity means to me. Students first, parents always.
Candace, you all are doing an excellent job staying, um, within the time limit. Thank you so much. It is, it is not easy to stop you all in the midst of such inspiring remarks. Um, what assurances? You know what? I'm gonna ask a question from this one, Ms. Jackie. Let's get to this one. Um, what do you know about Leandro? And will you sign the pledge? There's a candid pledge by one of the partners here, Every Child North Carolina. Um, and there is a pledge that is going out across North Carolina, one hundred counties. School boards are signing the pledge, asking for the state of North Carolina to release funding based on the West Ed report uh, to the tune of billions of dollars for investment in North Carolina. Uh, this pledge is something that every school board, um, member, uh, has to sign in the county before it can be officially adopted as a, as a resolution. Um, what do you know about Leandro number one, and will you sign the candid pledge from Every Child NC Coalition? I kind of gave you a, a little teaser for the first part. Um, let's start with Chris, Christopher A. Leach. We're gonna start with Christopher A. Leach. I'm gonna call out the names as soon as I finish your time.
All right, um, when we talk about Leandro, that's, uh, something that started right here at home. I think it's all about the, uh, funding and, and developing our children in a way that's equal to, uh, the rest of the US as a whole. I think North Carolina as a whole, well, not even North Carolina, I say nationally. We have that problem as in funding and being equally given and equally distributed. So here at home, I think we can actually use a lot of those Leandro funds to make our schools, our facilities increase and make them better to actually compete with some of the best in the world. I think having the children to do that, you first have to have the actual staff to do that. You have to have the facilities, have to have the resources to do that. I think the, the Leandro funding should be, uh, included in that. And yes, I would sign that petition that is currently there to, um, release that funding. That actually helps us right here at home. I think Hope County needs it just as well as any other county in the state. So I, I would look forward to doing that if I was serving, uh, on this Hope County school board.
Ms. Delamana.
I have signed it as far as I am concerned. Definitely need those findings here in Hope County. There's so much, much technology it would bring into the school system. They would bring the programs in for safety for the kids. And we do have a parent teacher meeting at each school. We do have that. I just want to let you know that. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. And, uh, the Hope County School District is backing the Leandro, uh, funding. And I definitely will be one of the first ones to sign it.
Thank you. Rumen. Castleyon. Castleyon.
Yes, nineteen ninety-four is when that case started. It was five counties. Hope County was one of them. I personally spoke to Rob Leandro, okay? And I'm gonna give you the bottom line upfront. Money doesn't solve everything, okay? We have to include our parents, right? Our parents are valuable, okay? We have excluded our parents, especially these last two years, okay? What, what we also have to do is we have to make sure that if, even when we get that money, we have to bring in tuition assist, uh, the tuition assistance back into the, uh, uh, K two four. Instead of just passing students forward. Right now, based on our, uh, how our student system is failing, we have basically condemned future students coming into the Hope, uh, County system. Think about that for a moment. We are condemning our generations to a failed system. So money doesn't fix everything.
Students first, parents over. Angela G. Saldana.
Yes, I would sign it.
Yes, let me first off saying that I would sign that petition that, that's going around if I am, or if I'm not, if I may be to sign, because I think it's a great thing that, um, Jackie McLean put on and, um, having to go to that, um, that event that she went to and spoke upon that on behalf of Hope County. And I didn't really know in great detail how serious it was until I heard her speak about it, because it's been so long that it has happened. So, but I do believe that we need that funding. We need it for our children. We need it for our students. Because the money will make a difference here in our county. So I will sign that petition whenever it does arrive in my hands. And because we need the money. We need the money in our school system. Thank you.
Tony Cunningham Senior.
Uh, yes, what do I know about Leandro? Yes, I understand that Hope County was one of those counties that was severely underfunded and therefore cannot provide, uh, the basic, uh, needs that children needed to, uh, be competitive as far as their education is concerned. And, uh, yes, I would sign that, that petition. Um, that, uh, funding, um, would bring along needed, uh, infrastructure, um, needs. You know, buildings, facilities, also some of the salaries of the employees of the county. I went through and I looked at some of the salaries of people that work for the school system. And, and being honest with you, I don't want to think that a lot of them, uh, are making what I'd call a livable wage, you know? And so therefore, we, we, we look bad also, and, uh, thank you for your time.
Ms. Catherine Blue.
The Leandro case is a case that was started in nineteen ninety-four, like everyone's saying, Hope County. Our kids need a sound basic education. And we get those, uh, partly we get, I'm gonna say we are, this kind of path. I know there was a, a march of this year, um, helping us really to do this. But I'm an advocate for meeting the money, not only, um, for the teachers, but for the students' education. So we need to make sure that we have a paper trail, and we really want to make sure that this is a thing. And I'm glad that Hope County is always in the fight. So yes, I would sign it.
John M. Perry.
Got you. I've been a minister, been a minister for forty years of my life, working in a environment called the federal government. And we have what we call an FAI, Better Acquisition Strength. I also have a budget of thirty-five million dollars, and I have a model to my people. I don't go to jail, you don't go to jail. So this is what we have to deal with. There are many programs out there as a backup. The Board of Election is a business. It takes people that know business to run it and run it right, because there's so many programs out there to support the programs. It's been discussed up here. You just have to know how to get them. And I know how to get them because I've been doing it for, I've been doing it for years. Fifteen seconds in counting. The idea is this, you have to have an administrator on the board, and we haven't had an administrator on board for years. And I look at it differently, but funding is there. Funding is not everything. But we know how to get the funding so we can make it happen. If I can't get it happening, it's not gonna happen.
Thank you, John. Tadika McGeeche Dunbar.
So, um, I have already signed the petition. Um, the Leandro case, I think it would be a great opportunity that we receive those funds. There's a lot of things that we can do with those money, um, far as the funds that, that would be imported here in Hope County and the surrounding counties. Um, we can also bring better, um, education teachers, um, different programs here in Hope County that we, that all the students can utilize. So yes, I would definitely sign the petition. Actually, I already did. Thank you.
By show of hands, students, Hope County school students, let's, let's kind of see you wave. Let's kind of give a reaction. This, that's very significant, you all. Uh, let's give the round of applause to our students. Just in case y'all forgot, these folks here will serve these folks here. And it'll take all of us as a community to make sure that they make it to the next level. So even though these are the leaders that are gonna be representing the leadership, all of us together are gonna help make sure we make this impact and see them all succeed. And so thank you all for coming. And this next question actually comes from a student. Um, there are two programs that are the largest sources of federal funding for school districts. One is Title One of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act. And the second is the IDEA or IDA grant. And the IDEA grant provides, uh, special education funding. The question is, what impacts are you going to be able to make in your elected capacity to help students in Hope County access these funds? So I'll read it one more time, and then we'll go through, and we'll, this time- And this time, we'll go through one more. So we'll start with Rumen, go ahead, alright? Two programs. Title I of Elementary and Secondary Education Act and the IDEA grants. Federal funding, what impact are you gonna make for Hope County students to be able to access these funds?
Regardless of Title I or IDEA, it all has to do with this proper management of the funds that come in, okay? Instead of using funds for other type of programs that do not benefit the students. For example, the Innovated Project, okay? It's a, it's a, um, basically a leech that takes money from us and only protects us select few. It has nothing to do with helping the students. So every program, whether it's federal, state, or the county commissioners gives us money, one of the issues that we have that I have discovered is that once the Board of Education gets the money, it can be used for other means, like the school. We started with twenty, thirty, fifty, then seventy-eight million dollars. Now we're adding to the school instead. So regardless of what money we get, it's about using it properly to benefit the students. Thank you.
Well, to stand here and tell you that I understand a lot of this stuff, I actually don't, but I know how to read. And so I'll be getting myself educated on some of this stuff. But I will say that, you know, being a parent and running a household, you know, when I do my monthly budget, you know, my wife and I have to understand that when money is allocated for a certain bill, guess where it gets spent? On that bill. It doesn't go anywhere else, Peter doesn't get robbed of PayPal. And I believe that we should use our funds for the purposes in which they were allocated. You know, if you have to come back to the table because you're short somewhere else, then let's deal with that issue. But we shouldn't have to deal with the same issue again, because what was done was not done properly the first time. Thank you.
Earlier I said Board of Education. I've been doing six years of reading and it's stuck in my head and I apologize, Board of Education. Oh, you see these claws right here? If I got money out there and I get my hands on it, I'll get it. That's the, for years I looked at the school system thinking, what do you, do you have the proper lobbyists? Do you have the proper people on your board? Because that's what the board does. They sell that school. Get up the rally and beat on the doors. Get up the worship and beat on their doors. That is what you do. You don't sit there and wait for this piece of paper to come in to you and tell you, we got a grant, we got a scholarship. And then you get somebody to know how to write a contract. We don't have that at the county level and we don't have it at the school. Those are general contracts that a kindergarten can write. Be more specific. Show where it's gonna go and where it's gonna grow. In the past, it went and it didn't grow. Thank you.
Okay, so last week, the Hope County Schools had a Title I night. And I'm a parent and last week I attended Title I, a Title I night for my son's schools. I think it's an awesome program. I think it's something that we should at least do once a month to bring parents to awareness and have build relationships with the teachers, the students, and the principal. So I definitely think that a Title I fund is something that we can definitely benefit from. And as far as our long-term goes and our short-term goes, we can also focus on the student performance. So I definitely think that Title I, Title I fund is something that we definitely can utilize.
When we start talking about Title I and different IDEA grants, things of that matter, I think all of those are inclusive to, we'll say, bridge the gap. They would evolve just to bridge the gap. Everybody's not gonna be on the same level, same page, so we can do what we can to actually bridge that gap to bring them to that same level. The at-home experience with that, I think one way we can do that is actually as we address tutoring. We can increase the tutors that we have as we bridge that gap. Also certain accommodations that we can make tutors at as we go forward with it. So bridging that gap, I think is what we're saying when we're talking about Title I, talking about IDEA grants. We're actually talking about that money, how it's gonna be used to make each student equal to the next student. And so as we evolve with that, I'll definitely see that as an asset that the school system needs as well.
Title I, what I know about Title I. I actually work for the federal programs of Hope County. And we are very strategic in how we use that money. We make sure that it is utilized the way that it's supposed to be. There are times when you are out there. So I think with the federal program, I know they did an awesome job with the funds and it did the things for the kids that they said that they was gonna do. It wasn't just on paper, it was out there making sure this money. Title I for those low performing schools, the kids that need more, I think that those funds actually let the parent and the teacher, as well as the community, come together. And that can be used to make sure that those kids get what they need. So it is awesome thing that Hope County has.
I think that the Title I and the federal program, IDA program is a good program. Especially when we use it for the children that serve it and that need it. So I think how we can make that available to our students and so they can have access to it is based on the need. We should make sure that the children, students get what they need. And if it's through this Title I program or the IDEA program, I think it should be deserving and it should get that. It should be available to them. So I hear everybody saying that the monies are allocated in different ways. I think that if we first focus on the children and with those Title I programs and the federal programs are born, I think that we will be in the right direction to use it for that purpose. Thank you. General statute dictates how we use those funds. General statute, we cannot use it for this or that or this or that. We have a great finance officer, Miss Wendy Chavis, award-winning Wendy Chavis as our finance officer. She keeps us on task on how those funds are to be used. At every board meeting, every meeting we go to, she tells us how those funds have to be used. We just cannot say, I'm gonna use this fund to, here, use that fund for there. It goes where the state says it, the county, state, and federal government says it goes. That's how we have to spend it, or else we've been some kind of lawsuit. And I thank you each and whatever, just know that we spend the money the way it should be spent.
The Hope County NAACP and various partners are hosting this forum. If you're just tuning in online virtually, you've been in for a treat, you are meeting the candidates on the ballot. This event is hosted by the NAACP for Hope County, Hope County Civic League, the North Carolina Association of Educators, New World Project, North Carolina Justice Center, and Every Child NC. This next question is around Board of Education governments. This question is, and we'll go in this fashion, from my right all the way over to my left. What are, or what is the best way to address differences of opinion on the board or between the board and the administration? Read it one more time. What is the best way to address differences of opinion on the board or between the board and the administration?
I can tell you how this Board of Education works. We work as one team, one goal. We discuss issues. I might be short, you might be consistent, but we always in the end come to one conclusion, which is best for our students. Which is best for the students. And so I want everyone to know, we don't argue among ourselves in the board room. We just take care of business and put our children first. And that is the number one thing on the agenda of the Hope County Board of Education. As we have it now and will be in the future. And every new team board members are, do what they know. There's no politics in that board room. We only doing it for the children. We are public service for our children. I believe that the best way to address issues or opinions is with respect. At the end of the day, everybody has an opinion on whatever the discussion is. And I think it should be addressed with respect and with dignity. No one has the best answer, no one is perfect. So I think whatever opinion is on that table at the time, it shouldn't be nobody's. It should be addressed with respect and for the best interest of the children, the students, and the staff. Thank you.
I think the best way to address opinions, being of any type of rule, is to listen. Make sure that each team player realizes it's not about you, but it's about the team. Stop, sit, support, that's a whole. So I feel like, you know, even though someone they vote one way, and we can talk about it and discuss it, listen to each other, respect each other, it would work out just fine.
I think with any board comprised of five mentalities, five mindsets, you're not gonna always agree going in the room. I think the biggest factor is as long as you agree coming out of the room. So you won't always have that consistency of that. But when you come out, if you can go in that room with an idea, if you can listen to another idea, sometimes those ideas might come together to make a better idea. So I think talking and listening, listening and talking, I think that'd give you an effective way of going in the right direction as a school system. Whether that be administration to be comprised of constituents with you or even with the parents. I think if you look there in the ballroom, all of that is included as well.
Well, I think that we all have to learn to agree to disagree. And we all have to have our own minds. And we all have to come together as a team and be a team player. Because again, we are gonna do this for the students. Everything that we are doing today, as far as everybody on the board, we are focusing on the students. But we have one goal, one common goal, and that's the students and that's the best interest for me.
That's a tough question, because it goes to your conscience. And this should come right beside you, set it on. To make it happen, we have to work together. If you look at the Constitution of the United States, you look at North Carolina's Constitution, you look at what's going on in August thirty-first pass, all this money that everybody thinks they're gonna get, they cannot define what a good education is. It's common words they use. So to be on the board, the only thing I have against the board, I've known these people for years. I ran with them back what, eighteen years ago? Oh, I didn't even say it, but we ran together. I know who they are, they're citizens of this county. That's what makes a school board, that you're a citizen, not somebody from Fango coming over here. The school system is set up in our country's constitution to be community-based, community-based. If one child, one child learns out of ten, we accomplished our mission, I'd rather see ten. But we do have to go into that board room, it's not a team, it's not a team fun, it's a business. Show you your ideas.
Thank you, John.
And then go on and go on, you're with the child.
Thank you, John.
Establish. Thank you.
Alright, um, my take on all of this is that everything that we need to know is written down somewhere, you know? And so I believe that we should first be guided by the rule of the general statute of law, you know? And then if there's room for interpretation, then we discuss it and make the decision that's best for our students and our school system and our community. And I want to take a quick minute to let you all know that I'm gonna have to leave. I have a Eagle Scout board in Lomington that I need to attend, you know? So this young man scheduled his board six weeks ago, so I can't lay him down. Okay, but I want to thank you all for your time, for your support, and also for all the panel members for your participation, alright? God bless everybody.
Alright, I haven't been in the army for twenty-one years and law enforcement for sixteen years. I know what team playing means, okay? But I have to admit, I let everybody in here, which I probably align myself more with only one person here, okay? I am gonna be representing the students and the parents. And of course, I'm gonna take care of the teachers, okay? But I'm not there, when you pull me in, I'm not gonna go in there to make friends of my peers. I'm gonna work with them as a team player, okay? But I'm gonna keep one thing in my mind, students first and parents always. That's the most important thing, and we have forgotten that. I don't wanna go in a social club, I have a job to do. Thank you.
John, you see this person down here with these signs? I just want to make sure, because I don't want any of the candidates to feel like you are taking advantage of going over time. So when we see this five seconds and zero seconds, and I say time is up, time is up, we just have to be fair. I just want to make sure we're being fair. And we've let you go with a few seconds each and every time. We want to make sure that we're being respectful. As if we want to be equitable in our school leadership as well.
Leader Bass, may I speak?
Yes.
I stand because we have asked candidates to not violate the interest to selectively video or tape sections. Our partners are live streaming this event, so that it will be shown in its entirety. So that all of the candidates will be shown in the same light. So we stand to make sure that if you have been recording, that you cease and that you delete and that you honor the rules. Civility is first. Honesty and truth.
Thank everybody, you know, even in the Grammys, they have to learn how to act right now. So we're doing a very good job, I haven't seen anybody pulling Will Smith here, but... For those of us that have been cooped up for the past two years, it is a little difficult adjusting back to these public spaces. So I really appreciate everybody's consideration. I thank you all for following the rules, just like we're asking candidates to follow the rules, it goes on both ends. And we're gonna keep this train moving, because we have a few more questions. This next question, I think, is very important, I think everyone here can agree that it impacts you even if you don't have students in Hope County schools. Is everyone familiar with the supplement? The supplement that Hope County pays through your taxes? Now, schools are funded in three different ways. The federal government ponies up a certain percentage, the state has an invested interest, and then the county, through your tax base, you set a percentage of how much of the tax base goes towards public schools. I'm not gonna ask the question how much, but there is, I will just let you know, a six percent supplement currently. The question is, would you be willing, and the county is the one that puts this bill? Now, in this case, as a school board, you can suggest or recommend to the county recommendations. This question said, would you be willing to increase the county's supplement so that we can retain high-quality educators and resources for the school? Since two thousand four till the present, six percent of our teachers, oh, the supplement has been six percent. So would you advocate for increasing supplement, why or why not? We can start, let's start with our ladies this time. And we'll start with Tadika.
Well, I'm gonna have to let you know, I am not familiar with that. So I'm not gonna stand up here and let you guys know that I'm familiar with that, so I'm not. But I will do my research and I will educate myself and I will see if that's something that we can consider to increase the stuff, the stipend for the teachers. So with that being said, again, I am not familiar with the stipend that is allotted for the teachers here in this county.
I actually would be for, I mean, teachers work really hard. And a lot of the teachers spend their own money preparing their classroom, getting things together for their kids. For the tax, local taxes, I mean, it's kind of a hard question to answer. But the key, highly qualified teachers, we got to do something. So if that means giving a little bit more, then yes. Because we need those highly qualified teachers. We need to retain them and recruit them and keep them at Hope County. I want to say at all costs, but locally, I mean, I know the money people are having difficult times. But at the end of the day, it's all about the children, so yes.
I would be that one that would go after that 6% because I know that teachers, they deserve that money. And on a local level, we should take care of our own before running to the state or the federal to get money. If we're getting that 6% on behalf of a stipend or a supplement for our teachers, I think that's where it should go. Our teachers teach doctors. They teach lawyers. They work hard at what they do. And like Ms. Blue was saying, I've seen it myself being in the school system where they're going there profit, getting school supplies, you know, buying school supplies so a student can have a particular poster board or something for them to do a major project. So yes, I would go for that 6%. I would go directly to the Board of Commissioners and ask for that money to supplement our teachers. Thank you.
The Board of Education and the Hope County Commissioners, we are always going before them, asking for what we need in the Hope County school system. Sometimes we get it, sometimes we don't. But that's our job. That's why we go before them. They have the purse strings, and most people don't realize that they have the purse strings over the Hope County school system. We get the local money from them. I was reading, I have something here I would like to say to you, our teachers now, "Education is the most powerful weapon you can use to change the world." That's what Nelson Mandela said. And our teachers are one of the, we have some of the best teachers in the state of Oklahoma. I can tell you that right now. We have some award-winning teachers, and we're working hard to keep them. And we're going to continue to work hard to keep them.
Teacher supplement, it's right now, the state is 6% for our teachers. That what that is? That's just a simple offset of their salary, which comes from the state. As I already said, that doesn't change. So everybody in here, they get up, they go to work, they work for money, simply. So when you say that supplement, that's an offset. So if you're not making enough at your job, it's not just to say, well, I need another dollar an hour. I need another $2 an hour. You know, so many things happen as a teacher that you don't get that same courtesy. They say, well, the teacher should just get this and get that. Well, a teacher has to go home every day to the same problems we have. And I think that 6%, that's a great start. And I think that could also be increased. We talked about the world today, you know, inflation's 9% going up, and that doesn't change the teachers' pay. So I think that 6%, I think that's still a conversation. We can go to the commissioners and ask, if that's 6% now, can we go to 6.5? Would you approve that? Now, I'll fight for that, and of course, that's up to them to say, yeah, your name. But yes, I would fight for that increase.
Years ago, I was a unit steward of the school system. I sent in negotiations for pay and supplement. We didn't have supplements up here. Taxes are different in Michigan. Yes, I support the system. But before I support the system, I have to understand the system and sit down and look at the ins and outs of the system. I know about supplements. I've been in this county for 30 years. So right now, it's, all it is to me is a title, and it's something that's there. It's been there for years. To be able to make a decision, on the school board, I need to look at black and white and make a decision from black and white and what the citizens of Hope County would that make you. Thank you.
Absolutely, 100%, but 6% realistically is not a lot of money, okay? We all agree to that. Everybody says that. 6% is nothing, okay? And so, yes, it should be whoever gets elected to the three positions. But that should be obviously a number one priority. And this is one of the reasons why we keep losing educators, because they're leaving Hope County for higher-paying jobs. It's the easy solution. We have to work together between the school board members and the county commissioners. And sometimes we have to negotiate and make hard negotiations to make sure that our teachers get paid what they deserve, not just 6%. Not just 6%, okay? 6% is nothing. Thank you.
I was trying to pull up the supplement for some of the other neighboring counties. One thing we do know is that some of our larger urban counties are paying 12%, 15%, 20%. Say that one more time. So just two counties, one county over, one county over. So that's just something to keep in mind. And since 2004. Thank you very much. So our next question, and we have a few more questions before we wrap up here. I want to make sure that we also have time for our candidates to give closing remarks. This question also comes from the audience. We're in the audience portion. And it is particularly for candidate Castellone. Given that PTOs are struggling to engage parents and challenged to get them to attend meetings, how do you feel, parents have, how do you feel the parents have been silenced? That is the question that has been posed.
So I got involved in the, I'll leave you more than one minute. I got involved in the school board in November, okay? Because our students' rights were being violated, okay? I realize the school board members are nonpartisan, they are nonpartisan, but they became political when all the surrounding counties lifted the mask except for us. It took parents, it took parents to come in. But I immediately noticed that we're just not included. We're just not included. I stand there in front of all five board members, and I'm limited to three minutes. So I have to choose a topic what I'm going to be talking about. If you really, if you really want to improve the parents, you need to have a meeting with the parents. It's easy to say that you have committees in schools, but are you really involved? Because I never been to one committee, Rockfish or the high school. Thank you.
This next question is for anyone that would like to answer. And we'll leave responses for three participants in aspect of time or respect of time. With two different high schools on two different tracks, how will you ensure minority/underprivileged students aren't left out? With two different high schools on two different tracks, how will you ensure minority/underprivileged students are not left out? Building two high schools on two different tracks? 300% I can't tell you that. When you go to the district, a whole school system, basically cut it in half, basically, you can't guarantee a certain ethnic group and to ensure that diversity is there, just drawing a line. So in doing that, me and myself, with your question added, that's why I'm in favor of one high school. Because in doing that, there's no guarantee, and you could leave someone out in doing that. So I would not give a brim of sense to do. Catherine Blue.
With two different high schools, how would that work? It's going to take a lot of documentation. It's going to take hard work. It's going to take extra staff. We're going to need all hands on deck. I feel like that is attainable, but we have to make sure that we have the people in place to make sure that that happens and that all kids get the same, that everything is the same, nobody is left out. We say no child left behind. This will be a time when we'll see if a child, you're going to have to do that, you're going to have to have results. You're going to have to stay on it. You just can't build a high school to let it off. Somebody got to be in place to make sure that everything corresponds with each school.
We're supposed to just hear from one more person, but I want to ask the audience, would you like to hear the entire round of?
Yes.
I will start next with John F. Harri, 60 seconds.
I'm going to think about buying this one. And the reason I say this, because I'm split one way or the other. I haven't made up my mind. I know which way I want to go. I want to go for the goodness of the people of Hope County. The other one I'm looking at is a system that deals with rules and regulation. So let me take a buy on that, and I thank you all guys for doing that. Thank you.
Yes. Ms. Della Maynor.
We are now working on a high school. If all our kids are together, everybody will get the same education. If you've got half the high school kids in one district, one place, and another in another district, someone will get left out. I personally want all our kids together so that we can keep up with them. We know everybody's getting the same education. Everybody's going to graduate with the 21st century 100%. And that's what we're working on, trying to make sure our kids graduate 100%. We're not there yet, but we're going to get there. And the only way we can really do that right now is keep them all together and make sure that they get the education. I don't want kids over here getting this and kids over here getting that, and then somebody's going to get left out. I can't see it. I'm sorry. I like the way it's going right now in school district. We can get started with right now.
Angela.
Maybe I'm misunderstanding your question, but counties next, in Comal County, they have more than one high school. And if you haven't been to our high school lately, you should go. And just a couple of weeks along, we had, it was eight fights at that school. And I can't imagine years going on and on and on, just having one high school in this county. So with the no child left behind, we have to stick to that whether there, whether it's three high schools, we have to stick to that goal. We cannot allow our children to be left behind just because, oh, they're going to the new school. We have to keep our kids on track, whether it's one high school on the east side or the west side. We have to keep our kids on track because we believe that no child should be left behind. Thank you.
So you know, I'm 100% with a new high school, okay? This thing about keeping students together, no, no. No student left behind, no. We can do this. What's going to happen when this county has 100,000 population? Are we just going to keep growing the high school? No, we have to split. It's a great idea. It works. One school, whatever school, whether the first school can become the CTE pathway, and the second school can become the STEM pathway. We can do this. I know we can. It's been done, like the young lady over there said. Cumberland County has 14, 12 to 14 high schools. How they doing it? More county, more than two high schools. How they doing it? It's not that difficult. We are growing. We're busting at the seams. We have to get a new high school in another location, whether it be the eastern side or not, okay? And there is a way to manage that. There is a way.
Do I agree with getting a new high school? At the present time, right now, I think we can deal with one high school right now. But as the county continues to grow on both sides, the east side and west side, maybe 20 years down the road, yes, we will need another high school. However, in the meantime, I have a solution. With the current high school right now, maybe we should have like a freshman academy to break the students up. And I think that'd be a good idea that we can bring to the board. So you have the freshman county, a freshman county academy on one side, and then you have the 10th, 11th grade as a senior high on the other side. This is the ideal suggestion. That's all. Thank you.
Hold the microphone because we're going to go right back to you with this next question, which is a follow-up to this question. So, and a lot of you all mentioned how to, we need to think about how to handle growth. Do you have a current thought or plan for how we handle growth? And this is not just for the high school level, but for the entire school district. What is your plan to deal with the future growth in Hope County as it relates to our students?
Well, one of the plans that I currently have, I'm not going to stand up because I feel like I'm playing a high school player or something. But anyway, one of the plans that I currently have in mind is that building a relationship with some of our local colleges that we have. Last week, I was at Gulf State University. And when I was at Gulf State University, it's a lot of organizations and resources over there, such as the GEAR Up program. I reached out to the director and I asked, why? Why do Hope County does not have GEAR Up? And you know, his response was, because nobody from Hope County reached over, went over to Hope County High School, went over to Comal County to get, you know, be a part of the GEAR Up program. So one of those things like that, we have to be involved, we have to be engaged, and we have to get our community, county commissioners involved so we can bring a difference to our county.
And we'll go on verse 110. Next would be Ruben.
Thank you.
But I still stand with the two high schools. We need a new high school, okay? How are we going to handle this? It's just being innovative. We can't be doing the same thing over and over again. In addition to the new high school, we actually need to start planning, most likely for two elementary schools and another middle school. The problem here in Hope County is that we are not forward thinkers. That's a major issue. I've been here since 1996, okay? We've been needing a new high school for a long time. We have. I know that we have students in at least one or two classes that they have to stand up. That's troubling to me, okay? We need a new high school. It's a safety hazard. If we build that, and we build to the high school right now, it's going to be a major safety hazard. When we have a fight on one side, it's going to spread like wildfire. We can do this. We can do this. We can unite forces with the county commissioners and work together to bring a new high school, a new, two elementary schools and a middle school.
Thank you. Ms. Della Maynor.
We have already in plans. We're working on it right now. We have the drawings of the addition to the high school. We have already planned out the parking lots, where the kids will be at, where the teachers will be at, the safety of the school from one side to the other side. We just have a great plan in place already. For what the money that we are going to receive, we've got it ready. We've been improving it. We're still working on it every day. We do make changes. But it's looking real good right now. And that's the most important thing, that we're not just sitting back waiting for things to happen. We are making things happen today. I just want y'all to know that I on the board will make sure that things go the way it should go.
I just told Catherine, what was the question? But as far as the growth here, if this decision like Ms. Maynor is saying for the high school to be added on to, we're going to have to pump up our security because... Because it's bad enough that we have less teachers, but if we have our teachers out there every day or every other week trying to break up fights, what is that gonna look like? So, that, that's a plan that should be in place, that we should expand our security, expand our SROs to protect not only our, our teachers and our staff, but the children too, that are so innocently sitting by. So, that, that's my, my opinion on that. Thank you.
Thank you. John.
I'm gonna jump into this in a second, 15 seconds or 20? Here's the issue, the whole issue is this. I've been here in California since 1986. I watched Hope County, from, watched Hope County have that cotton debacle out there. We're an agriculture colony. Today, we have 361,000 dollar houses being built. So what the county commissioners can do, they have it in their power, they, they run and let, they go out and they check out the basics. They have a way of doing this, because I've done it before. The thing is, go to the people of Hope County during the election and ask them what they want. Because when they got $78 million to play with to extend their school, that could be going to a new school, because property on this part of the state, Rockfish County, it's getting expensive. Where are you gonna put that school? Run it, centralize it. They haven't done that. Let them do what they want now. Get a levy out to it, a handout to it. Then go back to the people and ask for a bond issue. Get a bond going, we'll vote for it, get a levy, get a mail, and we'll build that new school. But the county commissioners will not do it.
Uh, Catherine, and then we'll end with Christopher.
The future plans for overpopulated schools. I mean, when we look at data, we have over 8,500 students in the county, but we only have so many schools. And I was looking at the teacher-student ratio. And that, it hit me like a ton of bricks, being a former teacher myself. I know in some, um, schools, especially at Skirlock, they brought other buildings out for the students when they got overpopulated. But that's fine. If we're gonna do that, let's make sure that they are conducive to learn. Make sure that those kids have heat, air. We have to do what we can with the money that we got. So we have to use the resources that we have and have a plan for the best thing for our students.
We start talking about growth, we're talking about the high school and eventual growth, and we're going for tomorrow. Um, as in today's thought and today's picture, the new high school, I think, is, is actually a great thing as far as going forward. Now, that school will encompass all of our students now. Now tomorrow, as we think of tomorrow, as we do that, as our capacity does continue to grow, well then that's when we can actually look at building another high school and wondering about those districts. One thing, uh, we can do also in looking at that, we can look into how the districts are made up with the schools and make sure they actually balance out with what we actually have. Um, make sure that we have actually, the schools themselves actually can maximize the students in there. Now, as we add different, another elementary school, another middle school, the growth that we've had in Hope County is not something that's, that's something you deal with so easily. Um, I think we say, oh, we need this, we need that. But building another, another high school, we're gonna be taking another teacher out of our high school to go to that high school. And I'm gonna get a whole brand new staff to go with this new school. We just got a different building to split. So I, I definitely think that we're going in the right direction.
I wanna make sure I'm asking, because this is our next to last question before our wrap-up from the candidates. Um, have you learned something about the candidates so far?
Yeah.
All right. This next question in particular is, uh, in regard to the quality of education here. Uh, this actually came from an individual that is inside the school district and is remarking around the conditions. And asking our candidates, and I'm trying to be, um, sensitive here to this question, what would you do to help improve or support the improvement of learning conditions in the environment in our schools? Is that, is everybody clear on that? All right. Um, as an employee in the school district, um, realizing that individuals are working under some very interesting conditions. What will you do to support improving of these conditions in the learning environment for our students? Did I hit, did y'all get it?
Yeah.
Y'all do the questions.
All right. Who feels led to go first? Yes, sir.
I feel like the fellow, like 4,000 years ago, when his son, when he's not studying, he's all partying all the night, and the fellow was getting down on him. 4,000 years ago, what can you do 4,000 years ago when it comes to education improvement? What makes education? Abraham Lincoln riding on a shovel? Or a kid who's going to Harvard walks into a school and has everything he wants? Or the kid who goes to a school and he sits down, and a pencil sharpener, and sits down and does his pencils? We have to go back to the basic of education. We've always heard, money doesn't buy everything. As parents, we know what the issue is. It's getting our child to study and do their homework. Teachers go through this every day now. How do we induce learning? We've been trying that for centuries, how do we induce learning? It's the individual teacher. How many people remember their school teachers, the way they go? If they won, and what they did and didn't do for you? My second says, my time is up. Thank you, sir.
Here in Hope County, I know we have a diversity of schools. We have a, um, when you think about it, we have so many campuses. We see Sandy Grove Middle, one of our newest schools, or Don Steed Elementary. Um, of course, they were made, some of those schools are 20, 30 years, um, younger than some like, uh, JW McLaughlin or West Oak Elementary Up Church. You know, those schools that have, have some good age on them, more than I do. And, uh, when you do that, those schools, you gotta go back in, I think, just like a Leandro type situation, you gotta go in and you gotta, uh, upgrade. You know, that building's been there 50, 60 years, but that's where you wanna start. You don't wanna start on one that's 10 years old. I think you need to go to those schools, um, just like, the safe place for a kid is school, sometimes. That happens. You go in there, you wanna warm, uh, cool, you wanna go in there, you don't, you don't want water running in the room, or leaking there, or leaky ceiling. You want your room to be, that environment makes the difference. And I think just spending money and upgrade of the facility itself can actually make that change.
I think we weren't able to get into the schools for about two years, if I'm not mistaken. I think we're gradually, just parents are able to go back in now. Okay? And I know, um, especially the high school. So I've been told, I can't verify, but this even low in some classrooms. I can't imagine being studying there. I can't imagine that. I can't imagine having to stand up. It's a, it's a class overcrowded. So there's a lot of things that we can do, okay? You know, the last bill that the, um, Roy Cooper passed was that during COVID, we were supposed to have no more than between 18 to 20 students per room. I suspect that we have more than that amount. So we have to fix a lot of stuff. And I would go on with more, but I'm, again, I'm only limited to one minute.
Our Angela, would you like to come next?
Yes, sir, I go next. Um, the quality of education. Um, I know most of us haven't been, aren't in education, uh, other than just going to high school or maybe college. But as a teacher, you wanna feel good about your job. It's been times when I've even driven up to my job and just sat in the car and didn't wanna get out, because I knew what I was gonna be facing. So I think we need to get on board with our teachers and support them, support them 100%. Because it's hard for them to say, oh, I gotta go in here and, and see what's going on with little Johnny today. Is little Johnny gonna have all his money, or is he gonna have food? Because if it's not, that teacher's gonna wanna go in her pocket, his or her pocket, to take care of that child. So I think that you can improve the quality of our education by teaming up with our teachers and supporting them 100%. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Sorry. Go ahead. Oh, no, I didn't see you. It's the last minute, you go ahead.
Uh, I teach as one of the most important things in our school district. And we try to get the best of the best to come to Hope County. And we do have an Echo Ridge Teaching Housing Complex that works if they come to Hope County, that they can come and have a place to stay. Uh, so we provided that for them. I'm sorry, uh, so we provided that for the Echo Ridge Teacher Housing Complex. So when teachers come to us, they have someplace to go and stay. And we have, uh, renovated extensively in all our schools. We have lighting field, girl, track southfall, Hope High. We have new cafeteria at the Hock Bay Elementary School. We have a new tennis court with lights at Hope High. Fully renovated state-of-the-art media center at Hope High. Uh, new health science lab at Hope High, because we can get certified today. A lot of our kids get certified and go right on out into the working field. Um, thank y'all.
Tanika.
So, the quality of education, it's just like a book. You can't judge a book by its cover. However, some of the schools here, we do need some upgrades, we do need some new appliances, and yes, the teachers here, they do a lot. And we definitely need to get the community involved. We need to get the staff members involved, we need to get the community leaders involved, so we can continue to have a quality education for all our students in Hope County. Thank you.
It's right here, it's deep. I have to put my glasses on for this. Because a quality education, a building, we need a good building. We need a firm foundation, right? We need that. We need a, uh, environment that is conducive to learning. But I found out, getting a teacher, my philosophy, my philosophy is, when children feel safe, secure, and confident, they will be successful. You can put them in whatever. But when you got a teacher in there with passion, it'll show results. This is what I used to say to my students every single day. And if y'all don't mind me after me, I gotta finish saying. I am smart.
I am smart.
I am somebody.
I am somebody.
I can learn.
I can learn.
I will learn.
I will learn.
Because I'm wonderfully
Because I'm wonderfully
and fearfully
and fearfully
created. Today, I will be successful.
Thank you very much.
I will be successful.
I'm ready.
Thank you very much.
I said I'm ready.
Thank you very much.
God bless.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, we have, uh, reached the final, uh, conclusion of this, uh, candidate forum, and we will close by hearing 90 seconds. You get 90 seconds this time, Ruben. Um, 90 second closing remarks. And I want us to, um, you know, make sure that you are leaving with any website or any information, so they'll know how to find you or follow up with you. And, uh, we'll make this very easy. We'll start right here with Ms. Maynor, and we'll go all the way down, uh, to candidate Castelino.
Thank y'all. Uh, it's been a pleasure tonight to be here with all these candidates. And, uh, I know I'm gonna have, I am gonna have two new board members, because I do plan to go back on this Board of Education, because I am the only one qualified with the experience to, to, uh, sit on that board right now. And I want everyone to know who everyone is. I've worked with you. We will make sure that the school district continues to grow, that the kids will graduate. Our number one goal is to make sure that they graduate with the 21st century knowledge to get out there and go anywhere in the world they wanna go. It's teamwork. It's fellowship together. It's, all my kids, I actually have a granddaughter in high school right now. Get ready to graduate. So pray for her, she graduates. I have a grandson in the ninth grade that he would be able to come forward to and graduate. I believe in the Hope County School family. I believe in the system that we have here. We've come a long way, we've got a long way to go. And vote for Della Maynor on November the 8th. Early voting, I take that vote too, it doesn't matter. But thank y'all, God bless y'all all, and God bless the Hope County School family.
I wanna say thank everyone for being patient with me. This is my first time ever doing this. I, um, before my church, every fourth Sunday and second Sunday of the month, but this was entirely different. So I thank you for your time, but I am Angela Sutherland, I am running for Hope County School Board. I am that advocate for the teachers, I am that advocate for the children. I don't have a problem with going to the Hope County School, the Hope County Commissioners, asking for what our teachers and our children so deserve. It's, um, it's three seats available, and I'm only asking for one. Thank you.
Once again, I thank Ms. Catherine Blue, 21 years of service for Hope County Schools. Three daughters that went to, uh, Hope County School, they graduated from Hope County School. One granddaughter grew in the audience today that is a, a student at West Oak Middle School. My greatest thing is that, um, experience has been my best teacher. And I think then, on every side, it is then a student in Hope County myself, actually having children and volunteering in the schools, becoming a classroom certified teacher. I've been on both sides, I know what it's like. So I have a heart, I have a passion. And today, I want you to know that I am running on purpose, passion, and experience. On October 20th, vote Catherine Blue. Come through for Catherine Blue.
I wanna thank everybody for coming out, I know with the hurricane, talking, everything, and to come to sit and hear us for the last two hours. I really wanna thank you for doing that, and we, uh, close out tonight. Uh, I'm standing because I wanna do what's right. Um, at the end of the day, no matter who sits in that seat, we want to do what's right. Um, as I was talking in the beginning, if you do what's right, you don't have anything to worry about. So as I ask for your vote, starting October 20th, closing November the 8th, I ask for that one vote to do what's right for Hope County.
Good afternoon again. Um, I am Tammy Gutiérrez Dunbar, and I am sitting in a seat. And let me go ahead and tell you guys something, I am so nervous. I am nervous standing up here in front of you guys. So, but let me, let me go ahead and close this out for you. I am running because I want to be involved, I want to be engaged. I am teachable, I'm motivated, and I'm ready to gear it up, because I'm ready to bring gear up here to Hope County High Schools, and I'm ready to pump it up to bring all the good resources. I wanna support the teachers, I wanna support the staff, I wanna support everybody, especially these little babies that we have out here. I want to give you guys a voice, or help you guys dream. Dream big, dream so big that you can't even imagine. So guess what, you guys? Go ahead and vote for me, Tanika Gutiérrez Dunbar, for the Hope County School Board. Thank you.
I love that attitude. Uh, there's one thing we need to forget here tonight. The school board is a business. School board has disciplinary powers over its staff, you know, with students. School board, school, school board has budget power. County commissioners do not dictate your budget. You dictate your budget to the county. The state does not dictate your budget. You dictate it, because the Constitution says that. The system is set up for that. I would like to see all of us on that board with our opinions, because we have greatness in us, that's why we wanna serve, but it can't happen. I wanna tell you this, we all here wanna provide the best for Hope County when it comes to education enlightenment. But the issue here is that we need to go back, what is the school board? It's not a teacher who's an acting teacher on the school board, because that teacher has to make it. This disciplinary action gives another teacher. Can't happen. Allah will not let it happen. As a junior store, I would never let that happen, I would challenge it. Two, unfortunately, it's not partisan, part, or Two, unfortunately, it's not partisan, par- uh, it's not, it's not partisan partisan, but it's not partisan. You can't be a family member of a person who's in a hierarchy who's gonna make your decisions for you. And when that's said, this, uh, I said before, and it's a business. Run it like a business. If you don't, you're not gonna survive. We could do it years ago when we were farm boys. We're not farm boys anymore. We're playing in the big leagues now, so they'll start acting like the big leagues.
All right. Thank you again for having me here. It's my honor to be with everybody here. Um, so I just wanna remind everybody that it takes the parents to educate their children. The schools are nothing more. The schools are nothing more than tools to help us educate our children. Somehow, we have forgotten that. This is why I feel like I'm excluded as a parent. Yes, I also have a, a daughter that's a, a senior. Okay, I've seen firsthand what happens when the school board members go unchecked. We need to have school board members that answer to the people that voted them. You need to remember that. That is not a social club. That's, that is a place of business. Yes, I'm gonna get along with all the school, uh, board members waiting, vote me in, but that is not my primary job. My primary job is students first, parents first, and I will fight for teachers to make sure that they get paid what they deserve. Which, we are doing something fundamentally wrong. Why we can't get our, our teachers paid more money? You need to remember that. And a sound basic education is getting qualified teachers to stay, making sure that our students have transportation to make it to, uh, school on time, and the right infrastructure, not a campus high school.
Thank you, everyone.
Let's continue to give a round of applause for every single one of the candidates that you've been presenting in front of today. While we're clapping, let's also give a round of applause to our hosts, the Hope County NAACP, Hope County City Chiefs, NCAE, New Rule Project, North Carolina Justice Center, every child in C. Give a round of applause to yourselves. October fourteenth is the last day to register for midterm elections. October twentieth is the first day for one-stop, in-person, early voting. Even if you're not registered, you can register and vote the same day. November first is the deadline to submit a request for your absentee ballot form, and of course, the election, election day. For those that haven't voted early, it is November eighth. Benjamin Mays, one of the late, great civil rights leaders and longest-serving president of Morehouse College, is known for saying, "I have only just a minute, only sixty seconds in it. Forced upon me, can't refuse it. Didn't seek it, didn't choose it, but it's up to me to use it. I must suffer if I lose it. Give account if I abuse it. Just a teeny little minute, but eternity is in it." Thank you for spending eternity, this part of eternity with us this afternoon. And I'll turn it back over to Sister McQueen, President of NAACP.
We wanna give Marcus a round of applause for an awesome job. Awesome, awesome, awesome job. And as we prepare to close, we wanna thank all of the candidates, um, for your coming. We thank you for your input. We thank you for your voice. We thank those of you that are in the audience. We thank you for being here with us. And we thank those of you that, um, submitted your questions. Now, the task is in your hands. Do what must be done, and that is vote. Vote, vote, vote. And at the end of the day, whomever you vote for, accountability. Accountability, accountability. Promises are promises, but our promises are empty without any action. So, we are not here tonight just to put on a forum. We're here tonight to hear from each of you. We wanna know where you're coming from. We wanna know what your thoughts are. We wanna know how deep you rooted into this. Because at the end of the day, it is our community, it is our children, that we are about to entrust in your care. And so, before we leave, I wanna share something with you. It's called education equity. And this is an affirmation. And one of the number one tenants of the NAACP is a focus on education. It's to spend a lot of time finding out what's going on in our schools. Talk to our teachers, talk to our students, talk to our community. To look at all of the inequities, the disparities, and there is a lot. While we are growing, yes, but there is still much work to be done. And our children, we often use it, and it becomes so cliche after a while. Our children are our future. No, they are our today. They are our today. So, whatever, whatever we do when we're serving our children, we must impact every day. And we must be sensitive to the needs of our children from whence they come, to help them find a path. So, what I wanna say tonight, and if you would like to, you can repeat after me, and this is an affirmation. We affirm in our actions that each student can, will, and shall learn. That's what a board does. We recognize that based on factors including, but not limited to disability, race, ethnicity, and socioeconomic status, students are deprived of equitable educational opportunities. Educational equity is the intentional allocation of resources, instruction, and opportunities according to need, requiring that discriminatory practices, prejudice, and beliefs be identified and eradicated. That is the goal of the Hope County Pratt and ACP as it relates to education and our community. And I trust that that will be the goal of those of you that have sworn to serve our kids. Good night, and thank you. As you guys are departing, we wanna invite you also on next Tuesday, October the fourth, we will hold our county commissioners and sheriffs forum. We invite you to come. It will be here at six o'clock. And then on Monday, October the tenth, we invite you to our judges and congressional leadership forum, which will be here as well at six o'clock.